Georgetown Scott Canyon Plains Zone and Commission. Come to order. First recognize Mr. James Stone as our new Commissioner. Thank you for coming on board, we appreciate it. We do have three members absent tonight. Mr. Solsky, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wiseman are not present tonight. So first item of business would be approval of the June invoices. If everyone's had a chance to look them over.
I make a motion to approve the June invoices.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Approval of the June 14th minutes. If everyone's had a chance to look over those. Make a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moran.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Approval of the July agenda. Motion to approve the agenda please.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Caldwell.
It has changed since our workshop the other day, is that correct?
There'll be items for postponement withdrawal, I think.
Yeah, okay. A second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. All those in...all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Items for withdrawal or postponement? Is there anything new, Joe?
Nothing new, just the two items labeled on the agenda. Self-storage, US 460 self-storage, and universal piping.
I make a motion to approve the postponement.
US 460?
Up there in top.
Oh, okay, that's way up here at the top. That ain't him in the right spot. Okay. PDP 2017-33 self-storage has been postponed. And PDP 2018-28 universal piping has been postponed. If you're here for either one of those applications, we won't be hearing those tonight. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. Joe, we had like three on the consent agenda now.
We also, you already approved the agenda, but we had something to add to the agenda.
Man, you're gonna have to keep up here.
All right, Alex.
Okay. Well, what needs to be added?
We need to add approval of an extension of letters...
Is that in the other business, Joe?
Other, under other business.
We'll put that as item C.
Yeah, colony unit 10 and unit 11.
Extension.
And also, item D, we can add a waiver request for the First Baptist Church sidewalk.
Now with those two additions, can I get another motion to approve this agenda?
I make a motion for that.
Ms. Mizell, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Now the consent agenda.
The items eligible for consent are item C, international crankshaft. Item E, the Penn Memorial Baptist Church.
I thought we had a...
There's a waiver on the landscaping on that, legally discussed at workshop, so it's up to you guys if you feel comfortable if you want to hear it.
Okay. What else?
And then item F, Wise Holdings LLC.
That it? So our consent agenda is PDP 2018-27 international crankshaft, a warehouse addition, a preliminary development plan to construct a 24,770 square foot warehouse. Is anybody here in opposition of this item, this application? If no one's here to oppose that application, we'll take a motion for consent, please. So move. Motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Is a representative here for international crankshaft? If you could come up and sign your papers. Charlie, please. Next application for consent would be PDP 2018-29 Penn Memorial Baptist Church, preliminary development plan to add 40 additional parking spaces for an existing church. This does have a waiver, what was the waiver, Matt McKenna?
It was for the VUA screening on the southern boundary there. As the parking exists now, there's no screening, and there's really no space for it unless it reconfigures the parking lot. So they're just looking to continue that screening on that.
Yeah, I agree with that too. If nobody has a problem with that waiver. Is anyone here in opposition of the 40 additional parking spaces at Penn Memorial Baptist Church? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve PDP 2018-29 Penn Memorial Baptist Church with the one waiver.
A motion by Mr. Moran.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Is anyone here for Penn Memorial? If you could come up and sign your papers over there, please. Next application for consent would be FSP 2018-30 Wise Holdings LLC. This is a final subdivision plat to divide one tract into three tracts, creating 1.64 acre tract, 1.34.14 acre tract, and 1.15.01 acre tract to be the remainder. Is anyone here in opposition of this application? If not so, we'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Anyone here for that application? Yes, sir, if you could come up and say Charlie.
I had TAI marked down as possible consent also.
I thought that one was to the TAI North Access Road.
Which one was your flight?
Technically, it is by numbers, but it's...
Okay. All right. We'll get right into our first application. Charlie, you want to...Charlie, you got time to sign it, swear by it? If everyone signed in to speak tonight, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the statement sure to give tonight to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief? Thank you all. All right, our first application we'll review is PDP 2018-25 Bluegrass RV. Go ahead, Matt.
All right. Thank you. This first application is for an RV parking lot. Some of the spaces will be covered, and some of the spaces will be covered, I guess, later. They also are proposing to construct roughly 53,000, 54,000 square feet of self-storage space. This property has access from Connector Road via an access easement that was platted in May. The zoning on this property is B2, which is our highway commercial district. The surrounding zones, or the adjoining zones to this property are also B2, R1C, which is our single-family, one of our single-family zoning districts, and A1, which is agricultural. The project site is just under nine acres in size, and there is one variance request with this application. Looking at the zoning of the surrounding properties, as I mentioned, this star is roughly where the applicant is looking to build, to construct a project site. To the north, we have the Finley property, which is the agriculturally zone property. It's currently outside city limits. To the east is Rocky Creek subdivision, that's the residentially zone property. And then surrounding it on the west and the south, we have a commercial, highway commercial zone property. Looking at an aerial photo of the site, just to give us a little bit better, a clearer idea of the property we're looking at, you can see it kind of lies, how it lies with proximity to US 460 or Paris Pike here to the south. Connector Road comes up along the western side. There's an existing driveway here that runs along the property, the northern property line. And that's where the access to this property is, or the primary access for this property is located, is via that existing driveway. This is a copy, or a portion of the plat that was recorded for this project site. I just wanted to point out, yes, there was a 60-foot utility and access easement that was recorded, providing access to this lot. That same access easement actually turns and comes south, providing access to this parcel number two down here. That parcel does not have approval for direct access to Connector Road. So, one of the things that we're going to talk about here in a second is just that we need to make sure that later, when the applicant brings a plat, sort of amending this lot layout, that access to parcel two is preserved, and that we have appropriate screening from. I've outlined in red here what the approximate new layout of the lot will be. As you can see, the current lot that exists in that area is only about four acres, and their development is proposed to be closer to nine. So this view here is sort of a cropped view of their development plan. You have the full 11 by 17 in your staff packets. It is located north of the, what was approved, I guess the final development plan was approved by you all just a couple of months ago, just to the south of this, for the Bluegrass RV sales and some maintenance. So I think the two uses are obviously somewhat related, as there is RV storage proposed on the northern portion of this lot. The setbacks are hard, it's obviously difficult to determine whether or not they're gonna meet the setbacks, because this doesn't, their proposed development doesn't fit in inside the lots as they're currently drawn. So the applicant is aware that they will need to do a minor plat, just to reconfigure the lot lines. They'll have to be sure that they have sort of a final layout of their development plan, so that there's no variance requests that are created when they create that minor plat. So, the minor plat may come really shortly before the final development plan is approved, but it will have to be sort of in that order, that we'll have the minor plat reviewed and recorded by staff prior to this final development plan being approved. As far as the development plan that they're showing, I mentioned that the access will be along that northern property line from Connector Road. There's also some availability for sort of a secondary access to the south along the eastern property line. There's an existing driveway that comes along here, and they've labeled it here as this future access easement down in the corner of the plan. But that could be a potential secondary access for RVs to come up and be parked up in this area, where they're showing the 89 parking spaces. As far as sidewalks, the sidewalks that they're showing really are just along the parking spaces adjacent to the office building. So here's the proposed office building for the self-storage. The only sidewalks are being shown are here along those parking spaces to help convey those who may have accessibility issues to get into that office building. As far as parking spaces themselves, apart from the RV spaces that are proposed, our self-storage parking standards in our subdivision and development regulations would typically require them to have 35 parking spaces. They're currently showing 19, and they are requesting a variance to reduce that number of required parking spaces from 35 down to 19. I do support that variance request, simply because most of the people who are going to use these storage units are going to park in front of the unit, you know, pick things up, drop things off, and then they will leave. The majority of the people who, I imagine, would use the actual storage units, or not use the storage units, who are going to use the parking spaces are people looking to make trips into the office. And I think 19 will be more than sufficient to meet that use. Before I move on to landscaping, I did want to point out, I've sort of outlined in blue here, just so it's easier to see on the screen, these parking spaces here are proposed to be enclosed in a building, you know, sort of as phase one of their development. And then these, this northern spaces up here that I've outlined in green, that'll be sort of a phase two. For now, they're proposing surface parking, and they've shown appropriate landscaping islands in that area. But their future plans are for that to also be enclosed in a building, and that'll just happen at some time in the future. They are requesting preliminary approval for both. That's why they've kind of drawn it with both, you know, the outline for the building and with the landscaping islands. That way, when it comes time for them to, you know, when their finances allow, they can just move on with construction drawings and have that building approved and erected, rather than come back to the planning commission for another preliminary approval. So as far as their property perimeter screening requirements, our landscaping and land use buffers ordinance requires that commercially zoned property be screened from agricultural property as well as residential property. And they are showing an appropriate buffering along the northern and eastern property lines, where they join the agricultural property to the north and Rocky Creek to the east. The property perimeter requirements don't require the same buffering just between one commercial property to another. So, that hasn't been shown here. What it does require, under section 6.13, is that we screen vehicular use areas from neighboring properties, regardless of the zoning district. So that's what they're showing here to the south, is that they're screening this lighter gray area, which is, you know, a paved drive area from the neighboring property to the south. And they're also showing, you know, some screening here along the western side. I have indicated here, in the staff report, but also here on the screen, there's an area here where they do need to also provide some screening for those parking spaces to what will, in future, be another, that access easement, once it gets moved. Looking at the interior VUA landscaping, there's actually a couple of variances that they need in relation to that. They're just shy of the total amount of interior VUA landscaping that they need. Our ordinance, based on the amount of VUA that they have, requires 19,781 square feet of interior VUA landscaping, and they're showing 18,679. So, they are short by, you know, about 1,100 square feet. I think it is appropriate to grant them the variance to this interior landscaping, given that they are planning on, in future, enclosing a lot of this VUA in a building in future. Once they do that, you know, that VUA number will drop, and then the resulting amount of required interior landscaping will drop as well. So I think it is appropriate to grant that waiver. The other thing that would need to be, I guess the other waiver that would need to be granted related to that, is typically we wouldn't allow an interior VUA island to be the size of this one. I think, once again, that it is probably appropriate to grant an exception in this case, simply because with, you know, development types of, with development of this type, where you've got self-storage, it is very difficult to fit all the typical landscaping islands in there. What you would typically end up with is, you know, little, maybe little bulb-outs on the end of the drive aisles, or things of that nature, or things that might just, you know, hinder larger vehicles or emergency vehicles as far as, you know, their maneuverability through the parking area or the drive aisle. So, I think it is, I think it is appropriate and justified to grant a waiver and allow them to use, you know, one larger island in this instance. As far as the canopy requirements, I think on the preliminary plan, there may have been some sort of slight miscalculation when they were looking at the minimum amount of canopy that they would need to provide. The, at least from what I was able to calculate, they'll need 93,358 square feet of canopy to meet our requirements. It doesn't seem like they're opposed to meeting the requirement, I just think there was a miscalculation when they calculated it on the sheet. So, I did, they will need to meet that on the final development plan unless they request a waiver to that as well, and you all approve it. I did have one question from the developers of Rocky Creek, that we just be sure to look at the lighting. And what I told them was basically what's in the staff, in the staff report, was that, you know, we do require a photometric plan for development plan. So, we would look for them to show on the final development plan that there's going to be little, if any, light, you know, basically spilling off of the project site, particularly given that there is a residential development adjacent to it. So, sort of with all of that, I am recommending approval of this preliminary development plan with the three waivers that they've requested, and the six conditions that are listed in the staff report. I did, I guess, just to point out, this first condition does, does basically say that, you know, they're agreeing to comply with all of the landscaping and land use buffers ordinance regulations, even if there are basically some errors on the preliminary development plan. When they bring in the final species-specific landscape plan, it will comply with all of our regulations, sort of minus whatever waivers you may grant to them.
Anyone have any questions from that right now?
Matt, I've got just a question, just to clarify in my mind.
Yeah.
South of this site, is that not Bluegrass RV's property also?
Yes.
So, the line of trees down there, although it's a different development, is that why though that buffer has to be in there?
That buffer exists, anytime there's like parking lot or drive aisles, we require, you know, in that, I guess anytime there's parking lot or drive aisles, and that's at the edge of the property, we require landscaping screening. Some of that is... the edge of the property, we require a landscaping screening. Some of that is, is aesthetics and some of it is also sort of to prevent headlights from one property, you know, maybe distracting a driver on another property or something of that nature. So, that, that's kind of why we, why we require that.
Even though they own both properties?
Yeah. I mean, they, they may not always own both properties, so we just require it with, with all the, all development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that it? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here to speak?
Jonathan Hale with Thoroughbred Engineering and I can answer any questions. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and then engineering questions.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant at this point? If not, well, thank you.
Should let me know.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Yes, sir, if you want to come on. State your name and address, where you live.
Henry Finley, two 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 five zero four Lexington Dunn. Also own the farm. It's right next to the property there.
Okay.
Just a couple of issues. If you could put the map back up there. I owned the property one time and I'm aware of a few things that they might be aware of. Right where the site is, make sure your grading is right because it turned into a lake in a rainstorm. All that blacktop, it was not done properly. Just something for the developers to be aware of. I have nothing, objections to it. Also going down the east side of the property, there was a survey error, error either done by Thoroughbred or by Meridian or by, I can't remember his name now. Back when it was done, it's one degree off. It goes all the way back. I don't know if this has anything to do with your, your planning or tree line like that. It's one degree off between here and here, which means it's one boat, zero feet there and it's twenty-five feet out here. So, it encompasses that entranceway which they do not have a decent view. I might be wrong with it, but Thoroughbred needs to aware of that. So, you can't build sides out here that I can just go on the farm. So, that's all I have on this information.
So, so you said they don't have no easement?
Well, it's hard to say exactly where that road is and how far it is. When we had the property, we built this road in here and we weren't aware of the survey error until after we turned the property over in two thousand and seven. And it was, it was one degree off and it was shot. So, in other words, it's zero feet there and it winds out as it comes out to here. So, I believe this road is still a part of the property belonging to J H L C.
Do you know that?
I didn't know that was because of an error, but I knew that there was a tiny, a tiny parlor.
And you're getting grossed a getting off, that's all you can do with it. But it hasn't, it hasn't been. Initially, development had traffic coming over here or in here. You can't cross that, but you don't own. But Thoroughbred needs to adjust that. They may have done the initial survey on it. I don't know for sure. I can't remember. But I didn't sign anything to write to speak. Have signed something, say something?
Did you swear in?
Yes, we're in.
Well, and, and I put your name down.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, I have something else to say later on. That's all I have to say on that.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on this application? Stat, uh, commissioners?
No.
Y'all got any problems?
I'll say my piece right now. I don't like it. I don't want it to come out on Connector Road and that's just the way I am. I, we got too much traffic on Connector Road now. We don't need no more. So, I think that they need to try to redraft it and come out on Parrish Pike if they could. They own all that property anyway, why not bring it out on Parrish Pike? That's my opinion.
Y'all had comments on it?
I can say something to that.
Yes, sir.
I know when we, when we're going to do the, amend the minor plat or do a new minor plat, they're going to try to get an access to the south.
If you bring it up to the south, I'm fine with it, but other than that, I don't, I don't want it coming out on Connector Road. I drive that road too much every day. It's just, it's too dangerous now. We don't need no more on it.
If there's no further comments or questions, we'll take a motion, have a vote.
I'll move that we accept PDP two zero one eight dash twenty-five for Bluegrass RV storage and development. A motion by Mr. Mithlin for approval.
Could I suggest, Charlie, you add to that subject to the staff recommendation because that'll have all the conditions and all that in it.
And the waivers.
Yeah.
Staff conditions, waivers and, and changes that may come up with them.
I see. A second by Mr. Moran. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know. Hold your hand up, Sanzese, real quick.
Everybody, except for me. I vote no.
That's okay. Motion is approved. If you'll come up and sign the papers, please. Next application is PDP twenty eighteen dash twenty-six TAI North Access Road. You got that one, Joe?
Yes. Okay, the next application is a request for approval of an amended preliminary development plan to construct a new road from the Toyota Two Show property north to Rogers Gap Road. This is the general location of the, of the roads, not the exact alignment. I have that in the upcoming slides. In two thousand and fifteen, Toyota Two Show came before the planning commission and got approved an expansion for a coil storage building and I think a training facility in this, in this general area. Since that time, they've looked at, at getting an emergency access to the north. When they proposed that to us, the construction of a new road, we told them that they had to come back to the planning commission to amend what we're calling, amend that previously approved plat, development plan, just because that new access kind of affects that, that development plan. So, what they like to do is build this new road to Rogers Gap and what they've stated as the, as the need or the use of the road is to add an alternative ingress and egress point for emergency crews and vehicles in the event of a triport road closure due to adverse weather conditions, accident or repair. So, this road will be used for emergency purposes only. It's not going to be a full, a full access, full use, open road. This is the design and layout of the road. Essentially, it, it hits Rogers Gap east of the RV park about six tenths of a mile from US twenty-five. It follows the eastern property boundary and there's cul-de-sac about fourteen hundred and fifty feet south of Rogers Gap where they'll have a turnaround and then there'll be a gate at the end of that cul-de-sac that'll control access beyond that point. So, beyond that, it'll become a private driveway serving the Toyota Two Show site. And you can kind of see the coil storage building here. This is future coil storage expansion. They've also indicated to us that they plan on building in the future a training facility on the back of the property. That will have to be rezoned. Currently it's zoned A1. So, all the property, all this property north of Toyota Two, or triport Toyota Two Show is zoned A1. So, this will have to be rezoned and it is within our US, the USB boundary. Current USB boundary was just updated to include that property, but it'll have to be rezoned in a preliminary development plan submitted to the planning commission before that can be built. But they want to go ahead and build the road first and their proposal is to make this part of the road public to the cul-de-sac and then private beyond that. Our county road policy is that the fiscal court, Scott County Fiscal Court, doesn't have to accept any road in the county even though it may be built to public standards. They don't have to accept it. So, it, it really will be up to fiscal court to accept the road. It can be constructed to public standards, but if they don't accept it, it'll have to remain private and have to be maintained by Toyota Two Show for the life of the road or until accepted by the county. So, the idea is to connect here, build it with the cul-de-sac dedicated eventually to the county and gate it, control access beyond that point. Here's the, here's where it connects to Rogers Gap. There's an existing gravel entrance here and this is a, I forget the name of this lane.
I view.
I view. This is an existing road that serves a number of rural residents along that road, but it, it will be basically parallel to that road. Just some shots of Rogers Gap. Rogers Gap really isn't built for heavy truck traffic. It's narrow, I mean, it's sixteen to eighteen feet wide, no shoulders. It is a state road, so this, this entrance encroachment will have to get state approval and they'll have to go through that encroachment permitting process. But Rogers Gap is, is a state road and US twenty-five is also a state road. So, any trucks leaving the site will have to travel state roads. And the idea, as I said, the idea of the road is for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, other emergency vehicles having to get to the site if triports cut off and in emergencies using it as a means of egress to the plant if, if triport is closed off. Another view of Rogers Gap, I put these in here mainly to have a view of the road if questions came up. There is a underpass under I seventy-five. It does have sufficient height for trucks, RVs. That's, that's it. I have those three pictures if we need to go back to them. I guess our main concern is with heavy truck traffic on this road. We can understand the emerge, the need for, or the desire for another means of egress for emergency use. The state, we talked to the state encroachment permit person. They were also concerned with truck, heavy truck use of Rogers Gap. They didn't think it, it was, they needed to require a, a traffic study at this point since it's really not going to be heavily used. But, once that training facility was, was submitted for approval, they thought and we think also that a traffic study should be submitted at that time. And if, if the road was ever opened up to full use, to full heavy truck use, not just, you know, short, short period of an emergency use, that a traffic study should be submitted at that time also pri, prior to that happening. And we also think they should come back to planning commission for approval to do that if they wanted to make, open it up to full use. Because Rogers Gap really can't handle truck traffic in its current design. And we believe that Rogers Gap should be widened and improved to handle truck traffic if that's, that's proposed use of the road as, as a main open access for truck traffic. So, we are recommending approval, but with a number of stipulations and I've laid that out in the staff report. Those being that they need to obtain an encroachment permit from the state transportation department and the applicant should be responsible for all improvements that the state transportation department requires for the encroachment permit. I added a condition on if it is open for emergency. So, this is if triports close down and they have to use it for heavy truck traffic or emergency use. If the sheriff's department deems it necessary, the applicant should be responsible for paying for traffic control at US twenty-five and Rogers Gap because that's really where the main conflict is. If you're going out on Rogers Gap, there's a pretty major intersection at US twenty-five. So, I could see there being, could be major problems there with a lot of trucks turning out onto that road at US twenty-five. Number four is just a note that Scott County doesn't have to accept this road. If it's intended for public use, fiscal courts would still have to vote to accept it and they're not required to accept any county road, newly constructed county road. And then five and six, that a traffic study be submitted at ti, at the time of the, the training center proposal or if the intent is to open up the road to full traffic, to full truck traffic, that they submit a tra, they prepare a traffic study, submit it to, to the planning commission and come back to planning commission for approval to open, open up that road. And then that the construct, that they follow all applicable subdivision development regulations and they go through the, the process of pre-construction meeting and meeting with planning commission engineer staff before they start construction and submit construction plans of the road for review and approval by the planning commission staff. So, that's it. We're recommending approval with those eight conditions.
Does anyone have any questions for Joe? Joe, so this road, if it, and if it is built, it has to be built to county standards. Is Rogers Gap through that area now? Is that up to county standards?
Well, it's a state road, but it's not, it's not up in its full length to county with standards.
Okay. Anyone else got any questions for Joe right now? Thank you, Joe. Is the applicant here to speak?
I'm Mark Subcheck with Force Design, the design engineer for the project. And like was stated, Toyota Two Show's intent for this roadway is just an emergency access road. We've planned on being and have been transparent with the staff as to all the intentions of this. We've also discussed these stipulations and we've also agreed with everything they had up there. It's not our intent to try to force a roadway onto somebody who was, I don't remember the storm exactly, but I know with last year, year before, there was an ice storm where the plant was pretty much landlocked. We couldn't get anybody in. Nobody can get out. There was a few trucks stuck on Triport Road and just left for a bad situation, you know, the emergency could happen. Something could have been a worse situation as it is. And that's, that's what the primary need for this road is right now. Even if this training center were to go through at some point, again, that's planning out into the future, that still may take the primary traffic through, to the existing triport road access. So, we don't know at what time we would ever open that up to any other type of traffic. Maybe we, you know, decide when the state decides to do some improvements or maybe we can go hand in hand with them. But again, that's kind of some future planning that hasn't happened yet. So, we'd just like to ask for you, you know, consideration of this being just strictly an access road for right now for emergency access and emergency situations, repairs or, you know, the stipulations that have listed in the, in the application. And be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You stated that the main reason is because of the ice storm. That was like a year or two ago or whatever. If we have a ice storm, you're not going to get on twenty-five and try to get back over to the plant, back over to Toyota if that's where you're heading.
No, I think what the, the issue was is I think.
Coming out on this road.
Yeah, employees trying to leave just to get the, the.
Oh, it's still going to be worse trying to get back to twenty-five than it is going down Triport Road.
Yeah. I, I honestly, I haven't driven that myself.
If you do, if you was to drive it, you would understand what I'm talking about because that's up and down. You're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of trouble, so.
Yes, sir. Come up and state your name, please.
Matthew Non, I'm a Scott County resident and also work for Toyota Two Show. To your point, that is not the, that is not the plan for the road. It would be almost impassable. If triport road's blocked, twenty-five is, is just as treacherous. What the thought is in that situation is so emergency vehicles, if we did have an emergency at the same time that we had ingress for, for those types of vehicles. The, the more the egress situation is if there's an accident. The, the more the egress situation is if there's an accident on Triport Road, some sort of auto collision, something like that blocking the road. Excuse me, which has happened in the past. We would then need to be able to get trucks in and out. Cause we are part of a just-in-time manufacturing. And so if we can't get materials out or bring materials from Toyota, it, it does run the risk of shutting down the line.
I like the idea of getting emergency vehicles in, into that backside of that Triport Road. Cause it, it is a long road and if something does block it off, it'd be tough to get back there. And I understand if, if it does get blocked, you want to try to get the parts to Toyota. We don't want to shut Toyota down, but it does happen. My main thing is, is you guys have got a railroad there. Why wouldn't you use the railroad instead of trying to build this road to get those parts over to Toyota?
Well, so again, with just-in-time manufacturing, it's, it's minutes and hours. It's not, you know, a rail isn't necessarily a feasible alternative to say, okay, well, we need a railcar to take something to Somerset. A Toyota Tetsu where they make parts for Toyota. They're just-in-time manufacturers. We have to get material to them on just-in-time basis. Also have to bring scrap metal from-
So it's just not going to Toyota plant Georgetown's going all over?
But even if it was to Toyota back, just to, to have a railcar as an alternative isn't, isn't practical.
Okay.
Excuse me, your last name again, please?
Non, N-U-N-N.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant this time?
Joe had mentioned several times about the, the state approval for encroachment on Rogers Gap Road. And, and they had talked with him. Have you all talked with the state?
I'm not aware of it.
Yes, we have, we've submitted the plans to the state and they were, the representative from District Seven was also at the technical review meeting. So we've addressed her comments and they've also, I believe, discussed not only with the staff, but with us about some of the requirements with the traffic study in the future. So as of right now, I believe that as long as they accept the geometry, which they have not provided additional comments, we have, you know, we had submitted to them initially, resubmitted with, you know, the proper geometry over there for the alignment and for the entrance, and they have not made any further comments than what was previously discussed.
Man, it looks like to me that you, y'all are investing a world of money into a project that, one, the, the county may not accept the road. And two, the state may not approve, you know, your encroachment here. It looks like to me that you ought to have some, some, some kind of guarantees from both parties before you proceed too far down the road. I'd hate for you to, to build this road and then nobody will approve it and, you know, it's just stuck there.
Right. Yeah, I understand that. That's part of the reason we're going through the developmental stage. We're going through the, the preliminary plans. We haven't even, this isn't have, we don't have final construction plans as of yet for this project. Just for that purpose, because we know we have to come through planning commission, we have to satisfy the state. And honestly, I don't know if the state's waiting to see what, what you and the county have to say. Or, you know, to get everybody on the same page, but we need to start with some approval somewhere for some comments somewhere. So we could be driven, you know, towards a proper design.
It does tend to go that way. We usually approve it and then it usually heads toward the state.
Okay.
It gets approval up there.
It seems the state doesn't want to say much until somebody else says something.
Gotcha.
Yeah, if I, if I may add, so even if the county did not accept the road, that would not be prohibitive to us. The road's important enough to us that we'll follow, maintain it perpetuity. It's, it's state thing though, but that would be an issue though.
Gotcha. Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? No, if not, we'll take some comments from good folks sitting here. Anyone want to speak? Anyone in the audience want to speak? Well, it's about time.
John Lacy. I have a farm at four thirty-seven Rogers Gap. It's, you can see it in, in the maps. Third generation farmer on, on the property there. We've been there since nineteen fifty-seven. Rogers Gap was once a sleepy little gravel road when I started driving back in the sixties. And it has changed somewhat, but not great deal. So my concern is that any increase in traffic on Rogers Gap is, is hazardous. It's sixteen, eighteen feet wide at the most. And the head shoulders before the rain came and then it washed all the gravel out. So now if you drop off the edge, you're dropping off six, eight inches in, in the side of the road. So it's, it's a little hazardous. I poke up and down the road on a, on tractors pulling machinery and, you know, I create another hazard. That's gonna be, that's gonna be an issue if, if this were to be used on a, on a fairly large scale. Now, from what, what I've heard so far, you know, it doesn't appear that's the case. But, you know, I just want you to be aware that Rogers Gap is a, is an extremely dangerous road. And deer travel it heavily. WMA, Veterans Memorial Wildlife Management Area is bordering the north side of Rogers Gap. So I raise crops on the south side and the deer come to me every day. So that's another issue that, you know, if we, if we start having a good deal of traffic coming out of, out of Toyota Two Show site, that, that could be a problem. Thank you.
Does anyone else? Yes, sir.
Brown Hall, live at one forty-four or Highview Path. I've signed in. Initially, their plan that they've explained is what we heard just as the neighbors. We didn't, we didn't hear anything. We've been hearing rumbles from a couple of people here and there. It was like, well, they're gonna put in a road for an emergency entrance or- And I immediately thought, it's just, it's hard to believe that somebody would spend that much money for an emergency. For a what-if. So as I told the neighbors, that's not the plan. It's, there's a bigger plan. They're gonna widen Rogers Gap. They're gonna try to, it's hard enough now with the RVs on there. Having an emergency road, I would be fine with. But from what I've heard here, and I think most of you have heard too, between, that's not the intention. It's, well, that's our intention right now. It's the first step to open it up and get a piece at a time. You know, that's why I moved to Georgetown. I love it out here. And like this gentleman said, it's small road, there's tractors on it, RVs. No shoulders. It's, it's a part of what, I'm from Eastern Kentucky and lived in Lexington for fourteen years. Moved over here a couple of years ago. And I know me personally, and I can speak for five of the, well, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five of the neighbors here on Highview. We all would not want that road opened up to trucks running in front of our house loud banging around. We spend, those are nice houses out there. None of us out there are rich. We all work hard. We want a nice place out in the country, be a part of this community, not to live across from an industrial park. The rest of that land, once that road's in, it's just gonna be a piece and a piece. We've got our road, we've got, we're gonna get the state to do this. We've got these people on board. They're gonna, and the road would get widened on, on Rogers Gap. It's all, you know, if they want it to happen, I don't know if our voices will make a difference. But we like living out there. We like being around the farms. We like, it's just, it's the community back there. And we understand how important, you know, Toyota is to Georgetown. It's, I mean, it's critical. It's, but to say they're more important than the citizens that, you know, worked their whole life to have a house like that out in the, out in the country. And we're gonna put a road right in front of your house that trucks are gonna be using. If that road goes in, that's what's gonna happen. They're not gonna stop. They want to use that. They want to, and I understand that. But I just hope that we're heard too, that this is a piece that, I don't like the way they introduced it. That, well, we're gonna take it as safety. We're gonna be able to get emergency vehicles in. We're gonna, you know, what's, with the likelihood of that happening, you cannot go to a board, you cannot go get approval for that amount of money with that intention. Nobody would ever approve it. No board, there's no, Toyota's not ran by fools. They're ran by businessmen. They would not release that amount of money if that was the intention for that road. It would not happen. That's just my opinion. I've been around, been around destruction, been around development. It just wouldn't happen. I would just hope that before we, before this goes too far, I feel totally different right now than what I did when I walked in here. I was like, well, it's kinda, you know, that they need it and it's, but seeing what's been said here, it's clear the groundwork is gonna be laid to turn that into a, to a road that's gonna run trucks up and down it all the time, right in front of our houses. Just kinda, you buy something like that and invest in it and you can just kinda see it dropping. That's why our properties, we paid what we did for them. Not because the houses are extravagant or anything like that. It's the lots, they're private. And it's, we're gonna get it, I see that we're gonna get it took away from us. So, and that's all I have to say.
If, if that road was constructed, would you be interested in tying to that road? Because I know your Highview Road is not-
Yeah, it's in terrible shape.
That's horrible. It's not just terrible, it's horrible.
That would be something that-
I've heard about it a couple of times.
That I would have to talk to the other neighbors. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't-
Well, I think if it's ever dedicated to the county, you would have the right to tie in. You just have to apply to the county, I would think.
That would be something up to the group, but like I say, when we came in here, it was more of just to kinda hear what was to be said. We thought, okay, cause we'd been told it's gonna be just for emergency vehicles. But it became more and more clear what the intention is and, and in all honesty, what's probably gonna happen. They're gonna do it, whether anybody likes it or not. And it's just a shame that those, and I know it's a small group, but it's kinda like, eh, the heck with them. It's the bigger picture and doesn't, it doesn't matter, is kinda the way I see it. Being right over on us, you know, it's the houses, the two houses in the front. You know, I'm in one of the houses in the back. I'll hear it and it'll be part, something I have to deal with. But the two houses in the front, I can only imagine what it's gonna do to their values. You know, I hate to see that. These are, it's not people, a lot of, it's working people. You know, people get up every day and go to work and work hard and try to have something nice to have it. Just kinda have something like this go through your front yard and that's pretty much what it is. But as far as tying in or if it does happen or whatever, that would be something that I couldn't say. It would be without discussing with the other neighbors. We've got kind of a tight-knit group and we would all, we like to discuss everything to see where we all stand. Maybe something they would have to be involved in as well.
Thank you. Then what, yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Get your neck.
I'm fine. One forty Highview Path. Brian Kinnison at Moore Perfect.
Thanks, sir. Yes.
My name's Alfred Tackett and I'm the one that lives in the backyard, connected to John Lacy, twenty-five acres with the lake area. This is where it all came about, about talking with me in the beginning. Unfortunately, the, the new neighbors don't know anything much about what has happened through the journey of what you were just talking about with regards to Highview Path. The developer that, that built that road, along with planning and zoning, well, flub the dub, I guess you could say is, you know, that road is built on nothing but dirt. There's no gravel. All the owners that used to live, you know, used to live, or the new owners at, at Bar, would never sign off on that road because of the way it was constructed. We've been to planning and zoning. You know, we once had talked about, you know, actually taking that road over and getting it constructed where you could actually use it. That fell through, of course, because some of the owners didn't want to pay, you know, what small amount at that time it was. It's probably ten times that now. So originally, you know, the road itself was supposed to be maintained by the different owners, exempt my property. But that, that hasn't happened since, you know, well, never. So that road is only gonna deteriorate. And when I originally started talking to the Toyota Two Show people, you know, they originally were talking about buying through, through my land. And then I had approval just by consent with the original owners that bought. But they've moved, so one of the original owners that owned the first brick house and then the flames. You know, because that is the one that is mainly affecting, you know, the drive-by. The other houses live in the back. Although they still have to come out to the road. So I pretty much got assurance with talking to Mr. Paulson from Toyota Two Show and the different ones, that this road would be put through mainly because they, they want to develop a, a, a training area. You know, mainly by people, you know, and office people, employees coming to the new training area. Also, he said his stipulation was to make sure that they could get in and out there, you know, which is hard for fire trucks to do now without beating and banging. So, you know, that's, that was my agreement for them to want to go ahead and do that. So, you know, myself, I, I'm firmly for this as far as the road being there because we will be able to tie to it and forego any construction that's never gonna happen to Highview Path. And it, it is to pieces right now. And nobody's doing anything about it and I really don't foresee anybody having money to do it. Cause it's a big project. And, you know, my assurance from, from the Toyota people was that their goal was for their, their employees, not trucks, to access the new training facility and the backup thing. And they were gonna try to make sure that every, all the trucks came through Triport, Triport. And keep, you know, as of right now, there might not be any trucks going up our driveway, but you can hear them as if they're setting on the, on backyard on the other road. So, I mean, they make just as much noise, they blow their horns and we can hear them just as if they're right, right there. So, you know, that road being, I originally talked to them about tearing up Highview Path. But they said the construction cost of tearing that up and redoing it was too much. And so, you know, I'm, I'm kinda, I feel good about the way that they've come with this myself. So, you know, I see it as a way for us to improve our property's value, improve our access as well. And then, you know, if the people want to walk on the old road or do whatever it is, it's not gonna hurt anything. Because whatever traffic is gonna be on that road, which is designed to handle that. We had the new houses built here and the road carrying all these construction trucks and, and concrete trucks beat it to pieces even more. What are we gonna do about it? Guys wanting us to come and pay four, five, six, ten thousand dollars to build a road that can't handle it. Cause it's gotta be totally redone. And so I'm all for that. I'm totally for that road. Because when we access, these guys can come right out, probably afford to blacktop their gravel now instead of blacktopping a road all the way to the, you know, to the end and never, nobody ever take it over. So, you know, if, if we are able to get up on that road and they're able to come out of their gravel and get on that road and then let the kids go play on the other part, I think it's good for the community. I drive school bus. The school bus is, they'd be able to come in there and get the kids. They can't do it now. They gotta go down to the dangerous railroad track and turn around. And, and I'm totally for this. I also believe it's the only chance for John and everybody else. Yeah, we're, we may have more traffic, but it won't be any more dangerous if they fix from RV park out to twenty-five. Because at least you can get by. Right now, the RVs are just as big as any truck. The only difference is, is those people aren't professionals like truck drivers are. So, you know, I think our, our ad is to have that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Certainly appreciate your concerns. I understand what it's like to work for something and buy a home and- understand it a hundred percent. As I said before, I am a Scott County resident. I've been involved in these meetings, I understand what's going on, and I can, I can tell you from my perspective and what I know, there is no long-term plan, that nothing's been discussed about future expansion and using that road for permanent, uh, permanent, you know, traffic. Couple reasons. Number one, from a logistical standpoint, it just doesn't make sense. We're, we're driving further away from the Toyota plant, so unless somebody-
Sorry, kinda dressed us a little bit-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, apologize.
Um, so if, uh, i- unless someone built a major manufacturing plant in the Mallard Point area, that's the only way we would ever wanna use that road, uh, for regular traffic. It's just, from a logistics standpoint, it makes no sense for us to regularly drive trucks out the back and then up to, up to Toyota when we have Triport Road as a direct link. Again, it's only for emergency use only. Um, and then even for our training center people, we feel like they'll predominantly use the road from, with, on our campus, from our main campus to the training center, because they will already likely be in the office, doing things in the office, and going to the training center. So, it, it's not, really not even practical for someone that's going to the training center to use Rogers Gap Road and come in. It truly is for emergency purposes only. Again, bringing emergency vehicles in in case Triport Road's closed and we have a medical emergency or a fire on site, or in case, just for logistics purposes, if Triport Road's closed, so we can continue our just-in-time manufacturing. And to that point with just-in-time manufacturing, I understand the comment to the gentleman's point, um, we don't throw money away. Uh, we're not gonna sp- spend a, a lot of money on a road unless we have a, a good use for it. If you understand the amount of money that we have to spend if we threaten to shut Toyota down, you would understand why that road's worth, worthwhile. I've seen us charter jets from Chicago to Texas to fly parts to keep from shutting Toyota's line down. Um, those are the things that we have to do to prevent that, because it's very expensive to shut their line down. So, the, the road is a worthwhile investment for us for that reason.
I got a couple questions for you.
How, how long is this road you proposed to build?
You're probably better to answer-
Yeah, come on up here, I asked you a couple too.
So, you asking how long the road is?
Yeah.
It's about four thousand feet from Rogers Gap to, uh, right now, the coil storage.
How far is it from down Triport to you guys' entrance?
From Triport to-
I mean, from Cherry Blossom to down Triport.
Yeah, so it's probably a third of, like, a thousand feet or so.
This is just my thought, a- and it's just a thought, but if Triport is in such, you know, you, if there's an accident, you can't get through or something, why don't you guys invest this money in Triport Road with the city instead of trying to build a new road? That would help everybody out on Triport Road, not just Toyota Two Show. Be a great gesture to the community. It's just my thought.
Yeah, honestly, I haven't looked at Triport Road that carefully to see where things are, uh, situated right now as far as buildings, uh, accessibility to either widen anything or provide some additional lane usage over there.
I just think that's something we ought to look at before we approve in this road here anyway, that's just my thought, but... That was, because I, I don't know what kinda money y'all are gonna spend on this, but you could get some of the other manufacturers along Triport Road to come in together. It could help everybody. It could bene- benefit a lot of people instead of just Toyota Two Show coming out, having a back entrance.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not a bad idea. Uh, it's actually a very good idea, but I don't know that it's practical. Um, just, I drive it every day.
I think this road's not practical myself.
Well, it, it, it's doable, it's feasible, and again, if you understand the, the cost that we have to spend-
I understand. I mean, I worked at Toyota five years, I understand all this just-in-time stuff, I understand all that.
So, but yeah, just the space on Triport Road, I, I don't, we'd have, the, the way we'd have to expand it that we would feel comfortable knowing that we could always get trucks in and out, or emergency vehicles in and out, I don't know that there's space there to do that.
Okay. Yeah, the, yeah, to comment to that, yeah, I would-
I mean, yeah, I know, I understand everybody would have to get together and look at that, but, I mean, I... To me, that makes more sense than trying to build this road out to Rogers Gap. Rogers Gap is not even wide as this road you're gonna build. So, it, it's inferior. It, it, if you start running those heavy trucks out on that road because of an emergency, Rogers Gap's gonna be a disrepair. Who's gonna take care of it? The state surely ain't gonna wanna come in and take care of it. Twenty-five is not capable of handling this. We already got trucks running up and down twenty-five, and people getting killed on twenty-five. We go dumping more trucks out on twenty-five, what are we gonna hear then?
I think Mr. Tackett made a, a good point. Uh, the, the best hope for long-term improvement for Rogers Gap Road is having us as an ally with the state. Um, we, when we begin advocating on your behalf that Rogers Gap, Gap Road needs to be-
But do we really need to widen Rogers Gap Road is my other thing, because it's already outside the USB.
Or improve it, I, I'm not up in terms, but to improve it to a, a better standard, to fix the shoulder issue that Mr. Lacy talked about.
I think it would take a lot more than just, uh, you know, a shoulder issue, or, I think it would take a lot more. You could get into a lot of major money when you start hitting Rogers Gap, and then, then, I don't know, maybe we would ask you to help on twenty-five a little bit, too.
And, and again, I mean, this is, we see this as a sporadic... I've, I've worked there ten years, there's been two, maybe three times where the road's been completely shut down from a traffic accident. Unfortunately, it wasn't a prolonged accident, but if there was some sort of a hazmat spill on that road, which is entirely possible-
What if there was a big fire? What if one, and it got shut down? I understand that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we're concerned about. So, I'm involved in our business company, the planning group, and that's one of the things that we talked about, and we've been very concerned about for a long time, and this is a way to address it.
And, and I, I'm glad that you guys are trying to address the issue of getting emergency vehicles to your plant. Because we, we, you know, time is other assets when there's an emergency, but I still think there's better ways to do it than to try to build this road across to Rogers Gap Road. It's just my opinion.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Tackett brought up a, a point there, would, would these, uh, residences be able to, to tie into that road? Do you use on a regular basis?
I don't know that I have that authority to say, but I can say based upon my relationship with the people that do that I don't think there'd be any issue with that. Is that a fair answer?
Yes, thank you.
If it does be, if it, if it does get taken over, if the county does accept it, uh, even at that time, then they could apply for a permit for a connection to that road at any time after the county takes it over.
I mean, why it's still a private road, would they be able to-
Right, well, it's still a private road, I mean, that would be discussions that they'd have to have with Toyota Two Show.
The property that this road is proposed to go across, I, I'm assuming that's Pat's, right?
Yes.
Uh, i- if the residents were to do that, I think they would also have to get permission from Pat, because Pat owns that property that your road is sitting on, and somewhere... Can you come up, Pat, and, and address that maybe?
Well, we're still-
State your name, Pat, and address it.
Pat Jewitt, I'm at three twenty-one Rogers Gap Road. We own the property, all of the property that's in question, and we also own the RV park. So, um, and we would maintain ownership of that property other than the twenty acres on the back, where they're looking at building the training facility. They would purchase that from us. We would maintain the, uh, ownership of the rest of the property. And the, the agreement that is proposed, it's not signed by us or Toyota, in that agreement, it says that they will not run trucks on that road unless Triport Road is shut down. And they've also agreed that if the county puts a stipulation on it, uh, they-
If they can.
If they can buy, if they take it over, then, uh, I would deed the property, I'll donate the property to the county, and they would take over. And then, uh, but if the county would put it in, and we've had this discussion with Judge Lusby, uh, that they would put it in that unless Triport Road was shut down, that it would be unlawful to run any trucks, other than local delivery, you know, if they're going in there. I guess, um, I mean, I know Toyota doesn't like dealing with me, because they came to me, and I really don't care whether I'm selling my land or not, because they don't make it anymore. But, so, but they would not run trucks, and if they did, without Toi- without Triport Road being shut down, they could be ticketed for that by the, by the Sheriff's Department. So, they have agreed to that in this, in this agreement that we're working on. We haven't got it done yet. And so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm the same way with these guys. I thought, there's gotta be something, because this is a lot of money, you know, and the proposed budget, I think, is like one point two million to build this road. They said that if Triport Road was shut down, and it's happened to other companies, that they could be fined up to like five million dollars for one day of being shut down. So, I can understand that. But, uh, you know, I'm like, I'm just like they were. I looked at it, this negotiation has been going on, it'd be two years in October, because I won't sign the agreement until it's like what I want. So, uh, you know, if they put that in there to where they could be ticketed for making that, then I really think they're, they're really, it, again, it's gonna be almost five miles from to get back to Interstate, not to Toyota, I don't know how far that is. But get back to Interstate coming this road versus going out Triport and being right there at Interstate. Uh, their main security gate, and they're not gonna have a security gate on, at this. They're gonna have a gate there, and I guess they would call security if somebody was coming through that way. But their main security gate, and they've assured me that if any trucks ever came through there because Triport Road shut down, it would be their trucks. There would not be any deliveries, they would just postpone deliveries coming to them, because they have to go through their security checkpoint before they allow them to come in on their property. So, you know, these are the things I know, and, you know, I've, I've, like I say, I've been a thorn in her side for quite a while, so, uh... But I, they are very persistent on it, and I know it's not just the people that are here. I do know that there's people in New York that really want this to, really want this to happen. And, and they've, they've maintained that it is for emergencies, you know. I've also, I've got, because of the RV park, I got proposals to widen Rogers Gap Road two foot from, uh, from the Interstate Bridge up to the RV Park, not, it's just what, like, another three hundred foot on to, on down. And so, you know, they gave me a proposal to do basically the same thing they did on Double Cobble Road, and, uh, ninety thousand dollars to come in there and do that. So, it's not a huge expense, and I don't think that would be hard to ask, you know, for that to be done, you know, through the state and Toyota, and, you know, some of the other groups that want this done. They, because they're, I think the big push is for the training facility, and I think this is kind of, uh, kind of an issue that they do this, so, you know. But we, we will have an signed agreement with Toyota, but we gave them permission to do this, and also if they wanna go ahead and do the zoning for the, we gave them permission to do that. So, thank you, Pat. Any questions?
Anyone have any question for Pat?
Thanks, sir.
Right.
Got any questions for Pat, Mr. Pat?
So, so Joe, the conditions of approval pretty much covers every, every aspect of both sides of this, um, issue.
Well, in, in the sense that it requires it to be used only for emergencies, and if they wanted to open it up, they have to come back to planning permission, so that would cover them. And that would give the authority you, you want to prove it opening up. So, it covers it that way, that it would have to be only used in emergencies, um, till the time they came back to planning permission and asked for it to be opened up.
So, potentially at that time when they have final approval to build the, the new expansion, they have to come back at that time.
Then one else? Yes, sir, come on back. State your name again, please.
Adam Klein, one forty Highview. My curiosity, uh, for them to come back, would, are they going to definitely deliver a letter or let every resident know that it's gonna happen? How can they guarantee that everyone knows to be able to come to this, to, to have a discussion about this? Rather than just make that statement in a letter, happen to get lost in the mail, or something along that lines where we can't, it just happens to get done. How can you make that statement?
Joe, you wanna answer?
Well, anything then, they would have to do the same notification that they did for this meeting, so they'd have to post the sign again, and have to send out letters again prior, prior to the next, if they were to come back. And then we verify that they did the mailing, they posted the sign before they could be heard.
Anyone else have any questions? Come on, man, is there anything, anyone else out there?
I think I've asked all my questions. If we don't have any more to discuss, we'll go ahead and try to get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, PDP, two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six, uh, with the eight conditions that Joe stipulated. Uh, this is just a amended preliminary development plan, to make it, make it clear it's all preliminary, so... I don't always agree with all the growth that's going on in the county, I just wanna make that clear. But it is, you know, it is growth that's, that's coming to Georgetown and Scott County. And, uh, staff does a excellent job in trying to review all the applications that, that they have to deal with, and it's our, our role as, as a planning commission to, to, uh, take all of that into account. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve it with the eight conditions.
Motion by Mr. Moran. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Ms. Mizell, will we take a vote? I guess y'all have already figured it out, I'm not for this proposal. I think this is a great opportunity for one of the biggest employers in the county to help the city out in a way to improve Triport Road. I don't know how many of y'all have ever drove Triport Road. It's not the best of shape either. If you've ever seen these big trucks that are hauling these steel coals up and down Triport Road, coming out at the intersection of Cherry Blossom, getting on the Interstate, they tear the roads all to pieces. If we, if they was to have to just, for one day, drive those big trucks on Rogers Gap on twenty-five, these road can get, conditions are gonna get horrible. Because they're not built like Triport Road, or built like the intersections at the, uh, Interstate or at Cherry Blossom. And, and I just think we would be doing a disservice to the citizens that live on Rogers Gap Road if we let this road go through. And that's my opinion. So, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on this. Uh, Mr. Moran, I vote for yes. Oh, we need a second, you just did a second there. I got them all wrote in the wrong place. That's all right. Mr. Moran, I vote for yes, would be approval of the application. Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
No.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Ms. Mizell?
Yes.
Chair votes no. Motion is approved forty-two. So, if you could sign your papers, please. It's postponed. Okay. So, next one's the crossings, that wind, wind mirror? This is gonna be a lengthy one, I know. I need to take a restroom break. Y'all wanna take a break real quick? I need, I need to take five minutes real quick.
Yeah, this is a, the next one is a consent.
Thirty-one and PDP, twenty eighteen dash thirty-two, the crossings at Windermere. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. Um, so as you mentioned, there's, uh, there's two separate applications. We're gonna discuss both of them together since they, they really deal with the same property. So there's a preliminary subdivision plat, um, for this, for this property. Uh, the, the property is about seven point nine acres in size, and so the, the preliminary subdivision plat, uh, looks to, to take that, that parcel and split it into three tracts. Um, so, and we'll, we'll look at a map that shows the zoning in a, in a second, but, um, it really looks to subdivide the two commercially zoned, uh, areas off from the residentially zoned area. So that's, that's the preliminary subdivision plat, and then the preliminary development plan deals with that, a residentially zoned area, and they're proposing, uh, to construct ninety-six apartment units on that property, um, with, with some accessory structures. There's a pool that they're proposing, a clubhouse, uh, and some, some garages and, and things of that nature. So the, the subject property, uh, is, is located south of Paris Pike. Uh, if you're familiar with the, the current Windermere, where the current Windermere apartments are, um, this is sort of a remainder of, of that original development that, you know, I guess is now being, now being developed. Uh, they came before the planning commission, um, in, uh, earlier this year, actually, I almost said in twenty seventeen, but earlier this year, um, to, to have their rezoning request, uh, heard, and, and that was recommended approval by the planning commission and ultimately approved by city council, uh, to rezone a portion of this property to R three, which is our, our high-density residential. Um, all of the surrounding, uh, properties are zoned B two. Uh, if you go across the street to, uh, across four sixty, um, to the north, uh, there's some property across the street that is zoned B four, which is, uh, a neighborhood commercial district. Um, the, so I guess for the subdivision, uh, the, the sizes of the lots that they're looking to create, um, the two commercial properties are, are roughly one acre in size. One's a little under, one's slightly over. Uh, and then the residential lot that they're proposing to create is, uh, just over six acres in size, uh, and the net density that they're proposing with their development plan is, uh, at, right at sixteen units per acre, or per net acre. So looking at the, the site, this is, I've outlined in blue here, this is, this is their site, uh, this area that's kind of this orange-ish color. This is, that's the area that, uh, they, they had rezoned, uh, to high-density residential earlier this year. Um, as you can see, there's two, uh, areas, one here and one here, uh, that remained zoned commercial, so those are the two, uh, areas that they're proposing to subdivide off. Here to the, to the east and wrapping around to the south, this is the, the current, uh, Windermere apartment complex. Um, uh, we've got Rocky Creek to the north and, and that, uh, B four zoned area here. Uh, there's some other commercial development and commercially zoned property, uh, to the, to the west. Yep. This is just an aerial view, just so we can get, uh, I'm gonna look at the, at the project site, um, compared to the previous one. You can see how, uh, all the units are, are sort of built out in this area. Um, this is, I guess somewhat misleading, this is just something that Google Maps added. This is not the alignment of their proposed entrance. Their proposed entrance will actually line up, uh, with, with Falmouth Drive. So looking at their, their preliminary subdivision plat, um, as I mentioned, they're, they're looking to create, take one lot and split it into three. Um, the, the two commercial lots are not proposed to have direct access to, to Paris Pike. Um, they are showing an access easement, uh, on the preliminary plat that'll provide that access, uh, to Paris Pike for all three lots. Uh, there'll also be another access easement that extends, uh, to the east, you can kinda see it here, um, and connect to, um, this existing road over, over here to the east. Um, and then they are proposing this, as I mentioned, this is the, the main access point and the main access easement, and that'll connect down here to the south as well. Um, so as far as the preliminary subdivision plat, it meets all of our requirements that we have in the zoning ordinance, um, you know, uh, so I don't, I don't really have any, uh, issues with their preliminary subdivision plat. Like the development plan, it will require, uh, approval from the transportation cabinet for, for their entrance, um, and they've already, uh, had some discussions with the transportation cabinet about that. Uh, this, this is a, a look at their, their preliminary development plan. Um, as I mentioned before, uh, they are proposing ninety-six total apartment units, um, and these will be located in, uh, six, uh, two-story apartment buildings, so this, this is, here's one, this is another building, this is another building, this one, this one, and this one. So those are the, those are the main, uh, well, those are, those are where all the dwelling units will be. Um, there'll be about six, there'll be sixteen units per building, uh, eight on the ground floor, eight on the second floor. Um, they are proposing, uh, this is a clubhouse and a pool, as, so if you kinda remember from the preliminary subdivision plat, this is the main entrance, uh, that they're proposing. Uh, this is Paris Pike up here. Um, they are showing, um, you know, a cross-section of Paris Pike, uh, and if you, if you look at that, that is on your, uh, development plan as well, um, but they are showing that there will be a new right turn lane, and they've kinda shown it here. Um, and they are, you know, once again, that's something that they'll have to work with the state on, uh, since that is a, a state road. Um, the two areas, uh, on the, on the plan that I've shown in blue, those, those are the two, uh, proposed five-car garages. Um, and if the, if, there, there's only one, one issue, or one area where, where this plan doesn't, um, meet all of the requirements of our, of our, um, zoning ordinance, and, and it is this, uh, the, the garage here, um, sort of in the northwest side. Um, there's a fifteen-foot setback here, um, that is a little bit easier to see on, on your eleven-by-seventeen copies of the plan, um, but that, that proposed garage doesn't meet that setback requirement. You know, it was, uh, there was, we, we made a determination that, um, you know, typically in a, in a residential zoning district, if there was a, a detached garage, we would treat it as an accessory structure, which would only require a five-foot setback. Um, with this being a five-car garage for a, a multi-family development, we made the determination that, you know, uh, the principal setbacks should apply, so in this case, a fifteen-foot setback. The applicant will, uh, is, is requesting that that be reduced to five and that we treat it, um, as an accessory structure. As I mentioned at workshop, I don't particularly have strong feelings either way, um, about this. I can honestly see, um, justifications for treating it either as a principal structure or an accessory structure. I, I, I think it, it is appropriate, though, that, you know, we, we, um, I guess sort of leave it up to the applicant to provide appropriate justification, uh, for, for the variance request. Looking at the, the access, I already mentioned, um, all the proposed entrances, but, uh, just to see it not on, on the plat, you know, this down here is, is where they're proposing one of their connections to the existing apartment complex. Uh, this over here on the east side is where they're proposing the other, the second connection to the existing apartment complex. Uh, and as far as pedestrian connectivity, um, all of the private streets and parking lots are proposed to have sidewalks, you know, lining, lining the streets, lining all of the parking spaces, so pedestrian accessibility should not be an issue for this, uh, for this development. As far as parking requirements, um, if you recall, uh, the applicant did request a variance to our parking, uh, to adjust the parking requirements for this development, uh, when they applied for their zone change, uh, and you all did approve that. Um, they are complying, uh, with, with those parking requirements, um, based on that variance. A hundred and eighty parking spaces, uh, are required for this, and they are showing a hundred and eighty parking spaces, uh, with handicap accessible spaces sort of distributed throughout so that, um, you know, there's accessibility, accessible parking available, you know, to, uh, all of the buildings. When we look at the, the landscaping requirements for this development, uh, I guess you probably noticed, they did include a landscaping sheet, uh, separate. I, I believe it's the third of the eleven-by-seventeens included in your packet. Um, they're, they're meeting all of our landscaping requirements as well. Um, there's, there's no property perimeter, uh, screening required because it is a residential use abutting, uh, commercial zoned districts. Um, they are complying with our interior V U A landscaping requirements. Uh, they've got an appropriate number of, uh, islands, they've got an appropriate number of trees populating those islands. Uh, and then here on, on the eastern side, uh, is the only, is the only substantial area where there's, um, vehicular use area that, you know, would be visible from a neighboring property or abutting a neighboring property, and they've shown an appropriate amount of screening on that, uh, boundary as well. Um, this, uh, well, let me just make sure I've gone through all my notes. Um, I have, I've discussed that. I discussed all the access. Um, so the, the applicant, uh, did provide, uh, some renderings, uh, for what the apartment complex would look like. Uh, this is, this is what they submitted to me, um, earlier today. I've included it in the PowerPoint presentation. Um, so this is, this is one view, um, and then, uh, this is, this is another view of, you know, sort of what all of the different sides of the building are proposed to look like, or the, the buildings. Um, we don't have, uh, design standards, uh, as part of our, you know, development plan review, but the applicant did submit these, uh, just so you could get an idea of what the buildings would look like. Um, so, uh, I am recommending approval of both their preliminary subdivision plat and their preliminary development plan. I did wanna make, uh, one note, I, I have it, uh, correct here in the waivers and on the, the conditions that I, I gave to Charlie, uh, but in the staff report, uh, under the variance, um, on the, the last three words, I included "and pump house." The pump house is not subject, or is not part of the variance request. The pump house is clearly an accessory structure and, and does not need to be included in, in the variance request. Um, but I am recommending approval, uh, of their application, um, subject to the, the eleven conditions, uh, listed in the staff report. I guess I did wanna make sure that I pointed out, um, just a couple of them. Obviously, number, number one, they are still subject to all the conditions at their zone change. Uh, the second one, uh, you know, they are subject to any conditions that the transportation cabinet may put on them as far as, uh, seeking approval of their entrance. Um, the third one, uh, is, is mostly, they would be bound by anyway, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, um, for our sub regs, um, they are responsible for, for the design inspection and certification, uh, of that private street that they create coming off of, uh, Paris Pike. Um, and then I believe all of the other conditions are very standard for, uh, for preliminary development plan. plans and preliminary subdivision plats. And that's all that I had.
Any questions from Matt?
So, so Matt, with the, the one variance of changing the setbacks from 15 to five feet, in your opinion, would that be a bad thing, changing that?
I don't, I don't think so, especially considering that setback is between, you know, the, the residential property and a commercial property, or commercially zoned property, rather. I don't think that it would negatively impact the adjoining property owner. I don't think it would negatively act the ability of emergency services to reach either property. Sometimes with, with altering side, side and rear setbacks, that is the concern, is whether or not emergency services will be able to get between buildings. But that commercial building will have about a 25-foot setback, rear yard setback from where it adjoins the, the residentially zoned property. So I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from Matt?
Got a couple for you, Matt.
Yeah.
So, so they're only getting approval for six right now, six buildings?
Yes.
How many? What is the total projected for the whole parcel?
For the, the whole development or for, I guess, all the apartments?
Yeah, like you said, what, 90 apartments right now, I think?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. So, once it's all built out, how many apartments would it be?
Once, once they put these 96, that, that'll be basically it for the apartments. I don't, I should've, I should've brought it with me, but I, I don't recall off the top of my head how many are already built to the, to the east and to the south.
I was taking it that each one of these was separate. I was looking at this all wrong, though.
Oh, no. Yeah, those, those six, those, those six buildings will contain all, all 96 units.
So that's one built. It looks like three, but it's one built.
It does kind of look like one building, or three buildings, but yeah, each, each of those is, is one building, it's just kind of the way that it's drawn on the, on the development plan.
Is it just a walkway?
Do what?
Is that just a walkway?
I believe so.
Makes them look like three buildings there?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you now, okay. And then if, if, if we don't approve the variance, and they still want the garages, that'll push them back out into the parking spaces, then they wouldn't have enough parking spaces for what we've asked, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if you don't approve the variance, they, I mean, they could, they could make it not a garage, and they would just be parking spaces. They could try to, try to find a different location for the garage, something like that.
What's between the garages and the pump house? That looks like the dumpster.
Uh, that, that is a dumpster.
Dumpster pad. Does it not need to, can it set wherever?
A setback? Uh, no, there's, there's not really any setback for that. There are screening requirements for, for dumpsters, but there's, there's not a setback requirement.
If we give them that variance, will they be able to do their screening on the property with only five foot back there?
Um, there, there's, I mean, there wouldn't be any screening required if they have a garage there.
But I thought you said there was screening?
Oh, on the side of the dumpster? I, I think so. I think, if I recall correctly, our screening requirement would allow them to just do, like an opaque fence or something like that.
That's all, good.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Matt. Is the applicant here to speak?
Nick Prigleyasko, Barnover Talbot and Roberts, 1000 North Hurstburn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. And I'm here with Adam Bender Saunders with CMW to answer technical questions as well. I was not here at the very beginning, so I was not sworn in if you would like to.
Do you swear affirm to say that you're about to give the truth, the best your information of belief?
I do.
I guess including your name and address, too.
Yeah.
I'm disqualified already.
Yes, exactly. You have the, we have a very quick PowerPoint presentation. It's really just to supplement what has already been shown here, but I can help, you know, fill in a little bit more information and explanation as well as Adam can, in addition to, to help with any more of the, I'll say, technical details or technical items. This was a, a matter that we were here before you in the winter, January, regarding the zone change, and now we have the actual plan and the layout, and that has all been designed with elevations as was shown here, but...
I mean, you'll need some patience.
Oh.
Okay. Sit down.
This is the zoning map, but it's the same as was shown earlier. It's also included in there just to, for reference purposes of where we're, where this property is. One of the items with that, I wanted to mention, the, the reason that their proposed or layout with the two, I'll call them half lots, the two lots to remain commercial, was to keep the integrity of Paris Pike there for more of a commercial, you know, feel, to make it, you know, to get it fit well. There's two proposed, you know, most likely they would end up being restaurants, at least that's what's been shown so far, with the rear behind it to be proposed for this, for this zoning. This was the prior plan, just to include for reference. This is what, before we had all the details and it worked out all the specific layouts with the property and the locations. This is, again, same number of units, same parking, just a different, a little bit different layout than what was, what was proposed before. This is the plan that was shown and discussed already. It's, as far as the entrance, the entrance from Paris Pike would connect through to the existing Windermere Apartments. That would predominantly be really for the benefit of the existing apartments. This, this would not really have any direct benefits, people wouldn't be traveling back through there, but it would provide the existing apartment community with both pedestrian and vehicular access to not only the two proposed outlots, once those are developed in the future, but also to Paris Pike to provide another means of ingress and egress for that, that apartment community. With regard to the variance that has been, is requested, if it were an accessory structure, there would be a five-foot setback. We're not disputing, you know, the, the stats interpretation of that in any respect. But as mentioned, really those, the purpose of that, those setbacks are to, one, for safety, as indicated, you know, make sure that there's no issues with that, but also to make sure that there's no negative effects on neighboring property owners. In this case, the neighboring property owner is, it's an internal property line, it is, the same owner will own both the outlot and the apartment community, so, you know, as that, that outlot is developed, it would all be developed if the variance were approved, subject to that. And, you know, quite frankly, if, if we had not combined these together, you know, as respects both the subdivision plat as well as the preliminary subdivision plan, there wouldn't be a property line that, that would cause the variance issue. We want to go ahead and address all that and, and do all that today, you know, at the same time. But the, the point being, really, the negative impact of that would be very minimal because it would be adjacent to a commercial property, a commercial outlot, with a 25-foot setback that would be required, you know, there as well. But with that, the, really, kind of I'll let Adam maybe explain a little bit more further as far as, you know, the, the plan or anything that I've omitted generally, and then we can be happy to answer any, you know, questions that you may have as to the plan and, and anything of that nature.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Adam Bender with CMW. We're an architecture and engineering firm at 400 East Vine Street, Lexington, Kentucky. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about the structures. First of all, you, Matt got it correct, those are two breezeways in each of the buildings. Apologize if those look like three buildings each. There's going to be rooms with doors to those breezeways, and then those will be the primary outlets to the parking lot. As far as these garage units go, we have one structure that'll be five spaces over on east, and in order to somewhat balance this lot, we were hoping to have five on the west side as well, just for convenience, for ease, certainly for marketing. And in order to meet our, our parking requirements, we needed to push that back to five feet. Now, Nick, as Nick said, this is going to be an accessory use, even though it is a principal building. And it'll also operate as a screen wall, and so as far as it being a nuisance to the adjoining owner, I would make the claim that it'll, that it'll actually help, because as Matt was saying, you, you need screening around your VUAs in order to keep light from trespassing. Well, nothing screens better than a, a wall. And this is going to be done correctly. This is not going to be a naked CMU wall. This is going to have a brick or stone veneer to match the building. We also have a, the same, a CMU wall with a veneer for that pump house and for the dumpster. And so it will look like one continuous, very nice, attractive-looking wall facing that commercial lot. And then if you don't mind, I'd like to go into just a little bit where we are in this process. We have submitted to KYTC for the new entrance. We've had some comments. The biggest one was to also add this left turn lane, which we have no problem with doing. And we haven't received approval yet, but we're still working with them, and everything's going well. We also have the geotech finished, no surprises there. And so with your approval today, we are hoping to submit construction drawings close to the end of this month. And so we hope to be rolling on the, on construction for this very quickly. As far as the commercial lots, have not heard of any interest there yet, though hopefully down the line, especially when these apartment buildings are built and they see how attractive they are, hopefully we'll have some, some neighbors move in. So I'd be happy to take any questions you guys might have for me.
You look like you got one.
Yeah, couple.
The left turn lane off of Connor Path onto Paris Pike, or left turn lane on Paris Pike into the property, or both?
Off Paris Pike onto Connor.
Okay.
We are installing a new right turn lane.
Okay.
And then the comment was, there's a left turn lane now, and I'm blanking on the road, but going east on Paris Pike, turning left.
Into, onto Falmouth?
Yes. And so Randy Feltonner requested that we re-strike that area and to include a left turn onto our property as well.
That's a good idea. I like that. 96 units?
Ninety-six.
10 garage units. What's the purpose?
Those are, those are the luxury ones.
All right.
You know, a lot of apartment buildings don't even have that.
Right.
I've lived in many apartments, and I was so happy to buy a house and actually have a garage. But, you know, there are people out there that would like the apartment living, but the convenience of a garage, and so it helps to have even just a few units.
Okay. Oh, yeah. That's it?
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the audience, please?
Again, I'm still sworn in, Charlie.
I'm not sure how long an else will last, Mr. Bender, but...
Just state your name.
This, this one time, we'll try to make it work.
Okay, I, Henry Fettling, I'm an adjoining property owner. If you pull up the map or an arrow photo, I can show you where, where it is. I don't have an objection to the development per se. I do have a safety objection, and I'll show it to you so that we can come up with a picture and aerial. That might work. I can show it off the plat. There you go. That'll do.
If you want, I can go maybe to the...
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the picture. Turn computer. I think we still have the PowerPoint.
Thanks. Please turn it on.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll do. That'll do.
If you want, I can go maybe to the...
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the picture. Turn computer. I think we still have the PowerPoint.
Yeah. Thanks. Please turn it on.
Yeah, that'll do. That'll do. Sorry, come over here, but, uh, my, my, now, this three acres right here, which is a commercial B2 property, we are working at this time to get sewer to it. The sewer company's going to put in a, a line through here, so we're working on development. As far as start trying to clean it out. When the initial grading was done here, they cut this way down, and there's a lot of old trees right there, and they had to cut into the root systems. They haven't blown down yet, but if you all know, a straight line, we have some circle roads, anything can happen. It's within the distance, they're big enough that when the distance, if they fall, they need to fall. What we do, we're going to fall what they do. So I have objection for the safety issues until that's addressed. If those trees blow down and hang on somebody's apartment or on somebody's building or on somebody's cars, it's going to be something I think needs to be addressed.
Ben or Matt, can you, is one of you guys address that?
I'm not figuring out the site, inside the site right now.
Well, this, this, you can't even get back in there now. I saw, I saw members saying when they first did it a few years back, this is also blowing up right now, you can't even get there to see it. But they cut that down a lot lower, and they had to cut in the root system, some fifty, those 50, 60-foot trees. And they're old, young farm trees, but cut into the root systems, they could blow one way or the other.
And this is on applicant's property?
No, no, it's all right on property line. It's all mine. But they cut their property away from it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They, they cut right up to the property line when they, when they dug it out. And so it, it cut into the root system. I didn't know if it'd be all of it, so I'm sure, you know, nothing's been done there. But now if somebody wants to do something there, that should be addressed, I would think.
I thought that was always the large drainage area where that pipe goes across. There's a, yeah, large pipe comes across.
Oh, that was when they irrigated the vacuum. It was way back when.
No, I mean, there is a pipe that crosses the parish road right there.
Okay, you may be right, but I do know that the, the guy that did the vacuum, when we were rolling it back there, ran it from the creek underneath the road there, back to a pond, down the water pond, and irrigated the vacuum. And I don't know if that's why they built it or not, but they cut the property all the way up to the property line. Had to cut in some root system. So I'd like to be, I'll notice an objection to that unless something is done about it. I have no objection to the proposal, but I think that's a situation that needs to be addressed for safety, not only for their part, but for me as well.
Thanks, sir. You guys want to try to address that, though?
Yeah, with that, I appreciate that, bringing that to the, to our attention, to the extent that, you know, those trees are, it was done for drainage purposes, it was done a while back, as far as that work. If there are trees that are on, you know, the neighbor's property that, you know, would pose a danger, we'd be happy to address it. We don't want to build a very, very expensive apartment community and have that, have something damage them or something of that nature occur. There would be complete, you know, this site would be completely graded and redone as to this property, the property that's subject to this. But in addition, as to a neighbor, we, you know, we don't want dangerous condition in that, in that regard.
Matt, does, is there any kind of landscape stuff they have to do on that side?
Uh, no, there's, there's not. We don't require landscaping between, from residential to commercial zones, so they wouldn't be required to do any landscaping on that side.
We don't have anything?
If something was developed on the commercial property, the commercial property would be required to screen from the residential.
We don't have nothing in place to preserve the tree line or anything?
Uh, no, not really.
All right, thanks, Matt. Is anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir.
I mean, Jason Shaw hasn't sworn in yet. Sorry.
Do you swear affirm to say that you're about to make the truth, the best your information of belief?
Yes, sir.
Your name begin, Jason?
Jason Shaw.
Shaw?
Where's your residence at?
I'm off of Elmore Creek.
Okay.
My question is, are the access points to Windermere Apartments, are y'all giving them permission to connect to a property you don't know?
I've got a question on that one myself.
You know, because there's not road going for each one yet.
I think that was brought up before in the, when we did the zone change, that was brought up.
Yeah, I don't know if y'all, are you giving them permission to do it? Or they got to get permission from the owners of when they're...
That would have to be agreement between the owners of the two properties.
They're already...
Yeah.
Because there's no road being built yet. They have to go into their property to build the road, so I just don't know if you're getting them permission to do that.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
You want to try to address that?
You know, 'cause there's not road going for each one yet.
In the, uh, when we did the zone change, that was brought up.
Yeah, I don't know if y'all, are you giving them permission to do it? Or they gotta get permission from the owners of when they're here?
That would have to be agreement between the owners of the two properties. Yeah.
'Cause there's no road being built yet. They have to go on to their property to build the road. So I just don't know if you're getting permission to do that.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
You wanna try to address that?
So the Windermere Apartments to the south does contain an access easement. And then we are creating a, a private street, Connor Path, that will also have an access easement. And the owner would like to allow vehicles from, from Windermere Apartments to be able to exit through this property, but not enter. And so we are putting in a gate so that emergency vehicles will be allowed to go through. But no one will be allowed to shortcut through this property in the Windermere Apartments. They will be allowed to leave. The reason is because we are introducing an attraction as far as vehicle traffic counts. And right turn lane can only hold so many. And so if traffic were to back up on our property, you can see from the plan, it's not going to, to hurt traffic patterns along Parrish Pike. But if it were to back up, as far as people entering, it would. And so the idea is that there's already a way to enter Windermere Apartments just down, just a few feet down. So there is gonna be an access easement, but for, as far as Windermere Apartments to get through this property to Parrish Pike, the idea is to allow them only exit.
So you're gonna build this road all the way back to their property line? Or are you gonna attach to something that's already built on their property?
Something was already built and designed to be connected.
Is that at the edge of the property? Do you have to go onto their property at all, or?
We can stay off of their property.
There's gonna be a gate there or something that keeps people from coming out of the part, Windermere Apartments onto Parrish Pike?
It's going to allow people to cut through from Windermere Apartments north onto Parrish Pike, but not allow them to enter. Uh, but there's gonna be a gate because we wanna allow emergency vehicles to be able to do that.
So they can leave Windermere and go to Parrish Pike, but they can't come in and get into Windermere?
That's correct.
That's what you're saying.
I know it sounds strange, but it's because of, of traffic patterns and traffic flow and ensuring that this doesn't create any negative impacts on Parrish Pike because ninety-six units is going to add an attraction.
Okay. Thank you.
But they could come, they could come in that way and go all the way down over to, uh, Windermere Path?
Yes, I could. There's not as much motivation to do that. And so if somebody wanted to do that, there's nothing to stop them. And the access easement does extend to Windermere Path as well.
Okay. Uh... Do you have any questions from anyone? Any more questions from the commission? Have I asked all my questions? Is there no more discussion, or will I take a motion? On this application?
Do we have to do PSP and PDP separately on motions?
The application's filed together, so I'd say we'll do it together.
Just put them both on the same.
I make a motion to approve PSP twenty eighteen thirty-one and PDP twenty eighteen thirty-two.
Motion by Ms. Mizell to approve?
With all, with all those goodies attached to the backside.
Does that include the variance?
That's the part that's...
For the setback for the garage, right?
Yeah.
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion's approved.
I'll put the details out here too. It's a proper language.
Hey, uh, Joe, let's move up the waiver for the Masters Church. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
I, I never knew about the question, answer, is it, it's gonna be allowed?
If there's an easement, there's nothing we can do about it. Okay? Yeah. Did I answer it right, Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. I've learned something in seven, eight years. You go on, Ben?
Yes, I'll, this was mine. It started way before me, but I'll, I went to it. It came to my attention after I started, started reconciling our holding account, that we were holding three thousand five hundred and seventy since two thousand fifteen? Or is that what it says?
Sixteen.
Fif- sixteen. For completion at si- of sidewalk at United Methodist Church. When I dug into it, found out that it was for sidewalk, which I have highlighted, or missing sidewalk, which I've highlighted in your packet. We did take this to, I took this to the executive committee and said, or well, we, we contacted the church and they, yes, we really don't wanna do this. We took it to the executive committee. I sent a, sent a letter saying, yes, they want you to do this. The church has come back now with a request. Here's why we don't feel it's necessary. I'll let Mark explain that request. Trying to close out, trying to close out this money. It's, we've been holding it for too long. This is not something that we would normally hold a bond for, part of our bond regulations. We would not go onto private property like this and construct this sidewalk. So I feel it needs to be resolved, either constructed, we give them their money back, or we allow this to be waived and we give them, give them their money back. Any questions for me, I guess?
Mark Windermore, one ninety-eight, The Masters Georgetown. I'm here representing the First United Methodist as chairman of the trust, Board of Trustees, and also former chairman of the Construction and Building Committee, so. Just a couple of points to that. You know, we felt, first off, we sent a preliminary, I brought the whole set. The original plans called for some parking on the north side of the church between us and South Gate Drive. Before construction and excavation, that plan was modified. At that point, that parking lot was taken out, and also this front sidewalk was removed. So that was already presented and removed at that time. We did receive notice during the construction towards the end, is, you know, where's the sidewalk? At that point, we felt it wasn't necessary. It's currently, we, we saw no additional functionality or safeties that was, was needed for that. It's not been in place, obviously, for three years. We've had no issues from congregation or visitors or concerns. Uh, we, we feel strongly, it's just not necessary. We don't have sidewalks on the nor, on the east side of the parking that butts up to the church and, and the space, playground space. There's no sidewalks there. We just didn't feel it was necessary. It doesn't provide any, any concerns to us at all. In addition, there's a tree that is in excess of a hundred years old, a very large oak tree. And we intentionally did not build to that side of the church with our expansion. And we also modified our parking lot to get around that tree, put in a side wall to, it cuts right through that tree. So we wanna preserve that as well, so. So again, we feel, we feel strongly after a couple of years, and honestly, you know, we forgot about the thirty-five hundred dollars, so. It's been a couple of years since there's been any communication about this at all, so.
More than that, isn't it? More money than that, isn't it? How much money is it?
Thirty-five, thirty.
I thought we were discussing six thousand.
It's thirty-five hundred.
I was gonna ask for a half of it, but... He's gonna get half of it.
I might donate it to Triport Road. Any questions regarding sidewalk?
The reason the executive committee kept asking for the sidewalk to be built, 'cause it did show it on the plans that we had, and that's the only reason we kept saying, no, you need to build a sidewalk. 'Cause every time we had a meeting, I guess the word didn't get to the church, and the church didn't show up. So we'd say, no, build a sidewalk, so that's what happened there, and, uh...
And I, I found a copy, I gave Ben a copy, I brought a copy as well, is when, when the sidewalk was removed, so.
I don't have no problem with giving the church the money back. The church could use it in a good way and move forward with it. So I'll make the motion to give the money back to the church, release that bond. Like Ben said, we're not in a practice of building sidewalks on private property, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Mark.
I heard you have to do one more.
You hurry it up, 'cause I'm cold.
Another letter, letter in front of you, a request, uh, column is ten eleven, and we probably brought this to the executive committee, uh, but, uh, I think there weren't enough the other day, but... So we're, we're bringing it tonight. A decision needs to be made. United Bank, which this is an interesting situation. United Bank is not the developer, but they took over the subdivision, and they've been working to get everything closed down. We gave them a deadline a while back to, to get it done. They asked, they asked for a six-month extension in December, and that comes, comes to July the twenty-eighth. They have started the work, and I haven't been out there in the past couple of weeks, but it's my understanding they have made considerable progress, but they will not be done by July twenty-eighth. And so with the extension we gave, we would have to, with the last extension, we would have to call this letter of credit, but they are the bank. The bank's holding the money, and the bank's actually doing the work. They're not really the developer. They're fixing the situation, so. They are asking for a three-month extension, and I guess I would recommend that that be, that be granted to get them done. They did ask for another six months, and I said, no, that'll put you back in winter, and, um, we'll be back in that same pattern. But I think they could be done.
You think they can be?
Additional three months.
Did you talk to them about it, if they weren't done with the additional three months? That we would probably call the bond then, but that's kinda crazy to call it in October because...
I can't do any...
Not much sooner later, the Blacktop plant.
I couldn't do anything with it. Oh, it's already paved. Paving's down, this is for the final.
Just a sidewalk.
Sidewalk fixing, fixing ramps, the final, there's some broken curb.
Okay.
Where it's been, uh, this subdivision was actually built, uh, prior to... One of them was, was built prior to two thousand two, two thousand three, I think. That's how long this one's been out there, but it stalled for a long time. And now it's finally, finally built out and should be finished.
Most of the time we call, we, we say no for extensions. We call their bond, and then that puts more on them to have to get the bids and get it constructed and everything else, so. As long as they're working on it, I have no problem going, giving them a three-month extension and try to get this finished out. Especially with the bank doing it. The bank was getting done.
It's, it's, it's the bank holding them, it's, the bond is through the bank, the letter of credit is through the bank, it's kinda...
Only question with that bank getting bought out here, I mean, is that gonna affect what's going on here?
Uh, I couldn't answer.
You know, the bank got bought out by another bank somewheres.
Yeah, but they take over their obligations to...
So it wasn't a, wasn't slowing nothing down and slowing the process down? I'll make the motion, we give them the three-month extension and move on with it.
They'll get it done much faster than I could.
I made a motion, Mr. Stone seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Well, we have one more thing, Matt, and give an update on those in states.
We got a huge crowd for it.
Yeah. So I just wanted to let you know, I, we have been, we have been working on, on some of the, the research that, that you all requested.
Do we need to open up public hearing?
Yeah, yes, we should.
Alright, we're gonna open up public hearing. Go ahead.
So if you recall, um, it might have been two, two or three months ago, you all requested that we look at, you know, what some of the other communities in, in Kentucky are doing as far as open space requirements. For some of you who are, who are newer to our planning commission, uh, what we've been look, uh, starting to look at is requiring more, or I guess in general, just requiring open space with our, our residential development. Currently, we only, we only really require it with planned unit developments. Uh, we have sort of a, a standard where we, we request ten percent open space. So we were just trying to look, you know, is that an appropriate amount? Should we start to require it with, with all our development? And what numbers, you know, might be appropriate for that? So what I have here today is just a couple of slides where, you know, we've looked at some other, other communities here in the state to see what they, what they require with residential development. So I started with, you know, with Lexington, our, uh, you know, nearest neighbor in, in many ways. And so I've found in their, in their development codes that they've got, you know, this, this convenient table where they, they base how much open space they require based on, on the density of the development, which is somewhat similar to what we were thinking we would likely do. Obviously, um, the, our maximum density that we allow is sixteen dwelling units per acre. And as you can see from the table, um, some of their development goes quite a bit more dense than that. But looking at the numbers that they've got here, you know, five percent for, for some more single-family development, and then around twenty percent for, for probably what would be our median high density, does, you know, does seem pretty similar to, to the numbers that we were considering for our requirements. They did have some interesting things also that I've noted here on the left where they did discuss that. You know, if they're within a certain distance of an existing park, you, you, you know, that requirement could be cut in half. I think that seems like a reasonable development. And then all of the open space has to be maintained by the HOA. They don't really, um, they don't necessarily have a provision for deturning that over in, in their development regulations, although I'm sure there wouldn't be anything, you know, prohibiting, you know, the developer or an HOA from, you know, eventually getting the city to agree to take over some, some, uh, some of that property. The other thing to note is they do have a, a pretty high standard for planned unit developments. They, they do require thirty percent open space in all planned unit developments. Uh, and some of that is because if you look at their, well, their regulations just are different than ours. And from my brief look at their, their, their regulations, if you get approved for a planned unit development, you basically almost have a blank slate as far as, um, as far as how, how you design that. Whereas ours still, our, our planning developments still tend to follow pretty closely to the zoning district and with just some small adjustments to lot sizes and setbacks and things like that, so. That's, that's basically how, how Lexington handles, um, open space. Uh, I looked at Louisville. Theirs is very hard for us to compare to because they, they've switched theirs into more of a, a dis, more of a, a form code type of a, a development guidelines. So it's hard to find like, you know, comparison based on density or, or things of that nature. But what I was able to find was that, um, you know, in their suburban, uh, in their suburban form district, you know, if it's a development over twenty-five acres or fifty multifamily units, you know, they do require fifteen percent open space, which, once again, that's, seems pretty similar to what we were considering. Planned villages, which, uh, in their planned villages, it does incorporate commercial and residential. So once again, it is a hard comparison to make, but in those areas, they, they require twenty-five to thirty percent. And then also, you know, once again, HOA maintenance, unless you can, you know, convince the city to take over that property. I looked at Frankfurt as well. They do slightly different. They have a, a number of square feet per lot, or if it's less, to do five percent of the gross acreage for open space. Once again, HOA maintenance. But they, they also have a, the ability to have the, the open space requirement waived if they're close enough to a park, and they meet some other, there were, you know, five or six other criteria that would, that would factor into that. Bowling Green and Warren County, so I, I kinda combined some of these into one slide just because they didn't really, you know, as, as you get into, to the, the communities that are a little bit smaller, they don't necessarily always have, um, open space requirements. Uh, so in Bowling Green, it, it... Uh, so in Bowling Green, it, it lists in their ordinance that is optional, it does give a guidance that, you know, if you are going to provide open space, to provide at least three percent. With Owensboro, the only thing I could find is that multifamily development is required to provide thirty percent open space. Uh, and then for Nicholasville, um, there were only two, two zoning districts that really, uh, seemed to require open space. Um, and those are the, they have a, they have a single-family residential district that allows down to a four thousand square foot lot. Uh, so those, that, that district, as well as, uh, they have a specific zoning district for townhomes. Those two districts each required ten percent open space, uh, at a minimum, um, and then their PUDs required twenty percent. So, in looking at it and kinda comparing, um, some of the numbers that we were thinking of, and that we had discussed previously, it does seem like it is, um, pretty close to, to being in line with, uh, what some of the other communities in Kentucky are, are looking at. This is all that I really had today, but, you know, we'll, we'll continue to, to look at it, um, and bring some more, I guess, start to bring more, uh, concrete proposals to you, uh, maybe next month or, or the month after.
Not next month.
Okay, the month after.
What'd you say, we got for next month, already seven applications?
Yeah, we have seven for next month.
Good. Huh? Alright, I'll get a change with Joe.
That's all that I had.
Y'all got anything else? Does anybody have anything else? Guys, if you pray, just pray for John Shirley. I got everybody sign the card and give it to Joe to take to the office and excited there, and we'll get it over to him. Just pray for him, he's not doing so well, so. Alright.
Do we wanna con, just continue the public?
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing, that, alright, we won't close it, we'll continue it to the next...
Yeah, we'll continue it.
Next meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, guys.